Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting from May 6, 2025. Our first order of business would please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda review, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move it.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I move to recess for economic development meeting.
Thank you, Kevin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to recess for economic development. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, this time we'll call to order our Economic Development Authority meeting. Agenda review, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda.
You have a motion for the agenda?
So moved.
Yep, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Minutes from April 8.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. At this time, we'll have Nancy and Jen come up and introduce themselves for the record, and we'll go through our agenda. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brought the sunshine with you, I see, so thank you.
Yeah. And I'm Nancy Volkman with the staff for the EDA, and Jen Thienemann, Director of Real Estate and Community Development for Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership.
Thank you. Well, our first item here is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Committee membership. What do you have?
Yes.
Perfect.
And so, the EDA did identify a need for the local housing trust fund, and through the process of developing our Affordable Housing Action Plan, and so last August, the EDA did establish an ordinance providing the affordable trust fund. And we started the trust fund using the statewide affordable housing aid that cities and counties are receiving on an annual basis. And then we did also, to further expand that, we did make application to the state of Minnesota for some grant funds for the housing trust fund, as long as the EDA provided some matching funds. So the EDA provided the $150,000, and we requested $150,000 from the state. We should hear back on that in June. But as we further establish our housing trust fund, our next step really is to create that advisory board. And that advisory board really will work with the EDA to establish that action plan of how we would like to see funding spent, and we'll work in our community to leverage dollars so that they'll be able to market to our community, local businesses, and even community members to try to raise funds, and look at other resources, other ways that we can fund that housing trust fund. And so today, we wanted to bring before you a number of different recommendations for that advisory committee, and they are listed here. Amy Leonard's with the Mankato Foundation, Christine Wilkie with the Mayo Clinic Foundation, Barb House with United Way, and Cecile with the YWCA. And we did really look at that, and looked at our stakeholders, and looked for interest, but we really focused it around entities that had that ability to leverage resources in our community. That's kind of our first area, so that we can grow that fund. So the next couple of years, it would really be focusing on that. So these members would be able to use their current expertise to help us in developing that. And then, these positions would rotate, and there'd be a three-year cycle for the advisory committee. They'll be on a sliding scale for this first round, but they definitely were wanting to help us get this trust fund off the ground. So we would want to request a motion to appoint the Housing Trust Fund advisory members as presented.
I'll move that.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Very good list of names.
Yes, it is. Pretty impressive.
Yes. Any discussion? Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the advisory committee membership.
And then the next item is with the Partnership Community Land Trust, and Jen Thienemann is here to give us an update on the Community Land Trust, and look at entering into a contract to administer funding for 10 homes.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I had given Nancy just some updates on our Partnership Community Land Trust activities. Some of those actually originated with the city of Mankato on Phase 1. And then, last year, we had asked you for support of our Phase 4 application to the state for some additional funds. So we're working to leverage local funds to receive state funds to support our work. So I did provide an update on Phase 1 and Phase 2, which the county was, and Phase 3, excuse me, that the county was not involved in. And then Phase 4, which was our last application, which was successful for 10 homes, 10 additional homes in Mankato. We will be submitting a Phase 5 in the same kind of timing, which is a July application to the state. So just seeking additional or ongoing support with that. So we have established the Community Land Trust, our organization, a separate nonprofit in 2008, but it had not expanded beyond the original two communities, which were Wilmer and Worthington. In communication with City Manager Susan Arns several years ago, we decided to establish that here in Mankato to address some of the housing needs, and specifically homeownership for marginalized populations that could not obtain homeownership. And so we started that journey here a couple of years ago, and are still continuing to, you know, build up momentum. But we do have two brand-new construction homes underway that are, will be complete in May. We are working on an additional group of new construction homes, as well as acquisition rehab homes. And again, as I mentioned, we've been leveraging local funds. We also received a New Markets Tax Credit, which is actually federal funding, but it is secure, that we are working to establish, and that's for 20 homes. So we'll be layering funds, again, to just reduce that cost of new construction homes, which, as you know, is very high and unattainable for low-income families. So we're really focusing on 80% or less of statewide variable median income, which is not quite $90,000 for the household. The two that we have under construction are for 60%. So it's pretty low, and hard to obtain a first mortgage, you know, get all the numbers to balance. So we're closing on the New Markets Tax Credit funds here the end of the month, early June, and then that really unlocks our potential to expand. We have quite a few parcels of land, about a dozen, that we've been evaluating for all of these homes, that will have an 18-month window to build. So we are really gearing up, doing a lot of background work to help get that launched, but we're very excited. In the end, right now, we've got funding for, I think, 26 new homes for the Community Land Trust in Mankato. And once that's all said and done, and then we'll be submitting for another 10 here in July.
That's impressive.
Very exciting.
And we appreciate your support.
All right, what are the wishes of the board?
Before we go on, I just wanted to highlight in here to the local housing trust fund support, because back in June, when we supported this application for the Community Land Trust, we did target the SAHA funds, the statewide affordable aid that we put into the Housing Trust Fund. So we allocated those resources, but again, at the same time, we did make that application to the state to see if we could get some grant dollars. And when we made that application, we specifically targeted the Partnership Community Land Trust as the project that we wanted to use those funds for. And those funds will be available in June, or we find out if we're awarded those funds in June. So they're out there, they could replace us actually using the SAHA funds, that we would go and use the matching funds and the grant dollars we get from the state for this project. And so I did highlight in here a spreadsheet that kind of showed you, grant request was for $150,000. The EDA did leverage 150 of general fund dollars to match that, and so we'd have $300,000 if awarded those funds. And so 250 would support the Phase 4 contract that the partnership is coming in to request a grant agreement. So we do have flexibility on that, knowing in June, we may have another opportunity to spend those funds. Either way, we did allocate money from that trust fund to go towards the Partnership Community Land Trust. And so with that, we would be asking that you accept the update of the Partnership Community Land Trust and approve a resolution authorizing the Executive Director to enter into a service contract for Phase 4 of the Community Land Trust, which would run through December of 2026, knowing that they have that 18-month timeframe to build those homes. And we'd be supporting those 10 homes with the $250,000. So that's what we would request a motion for.
Move to approve.
Thank you, ma'am. Second. I have a motion and a second for the request. Is there any discussion? Very exciting foreground.
Thank you.
That's a lot going on. It's great.
I see some of the houses going up, I believe, just east of town.
The Grove Farms subdivision, the first two that we have under construction. They are, and they're larger, other four-bedroom homes to meet some of the needs of our families.
Lot going on over there already.
Yes.
Looks nice.
All right, I have a motion and a second for the Community Land Trust agreement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, next item, 2025 Annual Point in Time Preliminary Report.
So the point in time, and its complimentary housing inventory count is done every year in January, and this year it was done on Wednesday, January 22 of 2005. And so today, I'm just presenting you with preliminary data that we collected regionally on the numbers for our area. The official count actually doesn't come out until December. And I know it kind of shows here that on that night, we counted 27 households that were homeless in our community, and that's been staying pretty consistent. We really try to focus on the length of time that people are homeless, and trying to shrink that period of time, just to show that we have a response in place for homelessness in our community and in mind to shrink that. So we just wanted to kind of give you that information right now. This does not include the housing inventory. We do compare the people who are homeless to our housing inventory. How many units do we have in our community, whether it's shelter, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, that can help people who are homeless? And as we get that information, we'll share that with you as well. This just gives you like a point in time, just to let you know what our region looks like, as well as here in Blue Earth County.
Awesome. So you want a motion on that, just to receive and file?
Just to receive and, sure.
Okay.
I'll move it.
And a second to receive and file the annual point in time preliminary report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Exciting news. Thank you. All right, this time, looks like that brings to the end of our agenda, a motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Go back to our regular board meeting, and we will work on item number four, some drainage items. Craig and Ryan. Good morning. Again.
All right, looks like I'll start out with County Ditch Number 25. We're looking at a repair hearing date. Blue Earth County Ditch 25 watershed is approximately 1,700 acres in size, located primarily in Decoria and McPherson Township. Based on inspections of County Ditch 25 open ditch and some subsurface field tile, a repair report was developed, using Blue Earth County Drainage Staff and consulting with engineer Mr. Chuck J. Brandl of ISG to develop a repair report. The report was developed and using drainage staff input, as well as engineer survey recommendations. An informational landowner meeting was held this past spring on February 19 of 2025 to discuss the proposed report, including costs and plans. Today's action requested, we're asking the drainage authority to approve the draft findings in order, setting the repair date for May 27, 2025.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Got a motion to accept the date.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the hearing date for County Ditch 25, May 27. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Minneopa Creek Cleaning.
Yeah, the next subject is approval of repairs and bid award for the removal of trees along Minneopa Creek. Estimates were solicited from multiple contractors for the repair cleaning work affecting the portions of Minneopa Creek. The repairs included tree and brush clearing. A portion of Minneopa Creek where the trees will be removed serves as the outlet for County Ditch 56, County Ditch 50, County Ditch 27, County Ditch 42, County Ditch 72, County Ditch 87, County Ditch 39, and Judicial Ditch 48. Costs for the repairs will be allocated amongst the drainage system based on benefited acres. On April 18, 2025, three estimates were submitted for tree removal work. The engineers estimate for the repairs was $56,703.03. The three submitted estimates are provided in the table below, with the lowest estimate submitted by Newman Escavating LLC from Kury, Minnesota, with a lump sum estimate of $18,491.60. The highest bid was submitted by Groundworks with a lump sum estimate of $42,357. ISG and Blue Earth County Drainage Authority have worked with Newman Escavating LLC on past projects of similar work, and with positive results. Based on previous work experience, ISG recommends awarding the project to Newman Escavating LLC. We're requesting that the Drainage Authority order the repairs and award the repair contract for the tree brush clearing to Newman Escavating LLC in the amount of $18,491.60.
All right, thank you, Craig. Got a motion to accept the bid.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the cleaning of the trees. Any discussion?
That's a very low bid, considering that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we got like a quarter of what the estimate, is there a reason for that? Do we have a clue why?
The only reasoning that we have is, I think he's also going to bid on a project that's right across the lake, for JD 48 with all the tree cleaning and.
So he's going to bid.
That's my only guess. Yeah, so.
Okay.
But we did contact, I might say, we, ISG, reached out to him, made sure that wasn't an error, and he was fine with that number, yes.
Sure. So we received three bids back. I said, as we solicit, how many, is this the only three we sent out to? How does that process work? Is it, the same ones get sent out, same pool of contractors every time, or do we look for specialty, or how does that work?
I would say, as a whole, we probably use our core group of folks.
And that would be about how many?
I would say six, seven-ish.
Yeah, we included GM in this.
Yeah, obviously, it's right literally in their backyard. But yeah, in general, it's probably six or seven each time. But I think a lot of folks are getting full with schedules, or it's not their cup of tea. Trees are not always fun, so.
Okay, other questions? I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the Minneopa Creek Cleaning. Judicial Ditch 15 contract extension.
All right, I love the last drainage item, Judicial Ditch 15. Contractors looking to get an extension for the substantial completion date. Larson Contracting was awarded the repair work for Judicial Ditch 15 on October 8, 2024. Included repairs affect portions of subsurface tile to be replaced. Larson Contracting has been working at replacing these multiple areas of tile repair all winter, with very few days which crews were not on site or not able to work. On April 16, 2025, Larson Contracting submitted a formal letter to ISG Construction Management Staff requesting an extension of contract. The request for extension was extended, was to extend the original substantial completion deadline date to be extended 17 days or until June 1, 2025. Identified reasons for the extension from Larson Contracting included poor soils, de-watering, and additional usage of granular materials. On April 24, 2025, ISG approved of the substantial completion date contract extension until June 1 of 2025, pending Drainage Authority final approval. Although engineering staff disclosed poor soil conditions and de-watering measures during the bidding process, unforeseen weather conditions have made for unsafe construction conditions at times, requiring more de-watering in large amounts of rock. ISG staff recommended the contract extension for the substantial completion to be extended to June 1, 2025, finding the change in timeline will have little to no impact on landowners and expected damages. Action requested, we are asking the Judicial Ditch 15 Drainage Authority to award the extension of contract and change order to Larson Contracting by granting a 17-day extension until June 1, 2025, for that substantial completion date.
Thank you, Ryan.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the contract extension. Any discussion?
I guess my only concern is planting.
Yep, and this was already had of an end of June scheduled, so we're just bumping that substantial completion date. There should still be in that envelope of total completion for the project, they're just asking for a little grace period.
Okay, I mean, that's the only concern I have, is this is right during that time period.
Agreed.
And, but, I understand, I mean.
We talked to both the affected landowners, excuse me, three affected landowners, and they've actually all been very good to work with.
Well, and I appreciate that, Commissioner, concerned about planting, and that's always a concern too, but I guess I'll still take safety over planting.
Yeah.
In this case.
Well, you know, whether we do it or not, it's not going to get done until June 1st. And I get that, it's just that, that's, you know, this is the time that every farmer's out trying to get it in.
Right.
And we want to get, they want to get it. Kevin will tell you, you want to get it in before June 1st, but I get it, I understand.
Not every farmer's out, some are at board meetings. But there's ones in the tracker.
All right, any other discussion? I got a motion and a second for the extension of the contract. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ryan and Craig. See you for lunch.
Thank you, guys.
All right, move on to item number five, Public Works. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
How are you today?
Good.
Yourself?
Good.
Good. Lots of busy agenda today. We'll get it going. The first action item for consideration is consideration of bids for State Aid Project 007610-29. This is county-state at Highway 10 from the West County line to county-state at Highway 20, including replacement of bridge number 90515. As you remember, this project is a combination of rural reconstruction, where we are fixing insufficient curves that do not meet 55 mile an hour design standard for horizontal and vertical curvature. And we're also doing full depth reclamation in areas where the road just really needs widening. So it's a seven-mile rural reconstruction project. Out again in the very southern western part of the county. Lower traffic volume. When we were evaluating this project, we did look at initially having a tighter construction timeframe on the project, trying to get the complete project put back together and paved. By the time winter rolled back around, we did get some feedback from some of our bigger bidders that we anticipated looking at the project, saying that they thought that was going to be pretty tight, and it might prohibit them bidding on the project. So we did back off on that, and put a provision in there that the contractor could effectively leave the road gravel over the winter from CASA 20, I'm sorry, from CASA 32 to the West County line. Traffic on that road is about 130, so it's kind of a high end for a gravel road traffic volume. So it's something that'll be, it'll be, our maintenance department isn't super excited to maintain that gravel over the winter, especially on a fresh grade, but there is a silver lining to that, that we aren't putting pavement down in the first year, and it does allow the road to year, the first freeze thaw cycle series over the course of that winter, so that we can experience those freeze thaw, and let the road settle, and then we can come in the bituminous, the full wearing course on the road, and not have any differential settlement, so.
So if we pave it all next year, when we do the top lift or the last lift, will it be a seven-ton road?
So the contract did not originally, because of the way we, we had to do a contract addendum to change the contract time to allow for the gravel over the winter, after we got that feedback from the bidder. So the contract, the design, was not set up to require that that wearing course, that final wearing course be put on. However, I think we could certainly change over that in, and just increase the bituminous quantity, and put that final two inches on top, if the board is supportive of that, which I think I'm getting that you certainly would be, because it's, we're going to either do it in 2026, or we delay it into 2027.
Because it will be a 10-ton road.
Regardless.
At the end, ultimately.
Correct.
But typically, and I guess I'm going by 13.
Yep.
This year, where it was posted, because we haven't got that last layer on or left.
Our practice is, in a conventional project, where if things go accordingly, and because this is a seven-mile-long project, and we're getting a late start, a conventional project, if everything goes right, what we like to do is we reconstruct the project in year one, and we leave off the top two inches or so of bituminous to allow for some of that settlement to happen, so that if we do get any dips or bumps, we can correct them. And then in the subsequent year, when we come in and make that correction, and then we put on the final two inches of bituminous to cover up those corrections, so that you get that nice new lift of bituminous. But in that interim year, yes, the road is load posted in the spring, as typically, I believe it's a seven or nine-ton road, to protect the pavement in that interim, because it doesn't have its full strength yet. So in this circumstance, we certainly could likely put the entire section on top, because it'll have gone through a full freeze thaw series in the winter. It's just we didn't have that into the project budget, so we'd have to look at that to ensure that we could afford to put that overlay on that year. Again, that would be seven miles of overlay, that would, so we may have to do some moving rounds, so I will certainly take a look at that.
With the freeze frost, just one year on the gravel, that's sufficient?
Yeah, I mean, two years would be better, you know, but.
That's kind of where I go with that.
We certainly understand to the delays out there with the project, and going through a winter of it being a gravel road, is the impact of residents.
That's the, that's the big impact, and the seven-ton road opposed to nine-ton road is a, or 10-ton road is an impact too, but if the life is longer with two freezes, I mean, you'll have to let us know what your professional recommendation is.
I'll do that.
I certainly would support getting the 10-ton road done right away, but.
I'll look at what we have from a budget standpoint, maybe the controlling factor.
And if you have any longevity projections on.
Less concerned by that.
Or we normally do it, so.
Typically speaking, especially in the pipe areas, is where we see that settlement, right? Because it's always hard to get, as much as you try, you backfill around those pipes, and you just ultimately, as moisture and freeze thaw happens, you get a little bit of settlement around pipes, or you just get areas where the soils are different, and you get a little bit of differential settlement, or you get a dip here or there. So we, that's why, again, why we. So we, that's why, again, why we do what we do when we delay that final wearing course. But with that, the eastern piece, our goal is to get that paved, the two miles, two and a half miles from thirty-two to twenty, because that's mostly FDR. So with that, we did distribute the bids. We had an engineer's estimate of eight million nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, thirty cents. Our low bidder was R and E Enterprises of Mankato at nine million one hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and two cents, which is two point one two percent over the engineer's estimate. Borneke was right on their tail at two point three percent over the engineer's estimate. And then quite a jump, Mathiowitz's bid was twenty-five point seven percent over the estimate, and Minneal Minnesota Paving and Materials, thirty-five point nine four percent over the estimate. This is one of the bigger jobs that R and E will have ever had for us, so I'm going to be curious to see what their team is on this. But they have successfully completed with some challenges on County Road eleven, on two different projects on County Road eleven, they have completed those projects. Would recommend award to R and E Enterprises of Mankato.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to award the contract to R and E Enterprises. Any discussion?
So we can't reconstruct a mile of road for a million dollars anymore?
I wish. This has a bridge on it too, so.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess, if we wouldn't have the bridge on it, we'd be right.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Yeah, I don't think we can do that anymore, even with the bridge on it.
Even without the bridge.
Yeah, those days are long gone, I'm afraid. Those were, those were the glory days, maybe.
I think when I started, it was about four hundred thousand dollars a mile, so dating myself a little bit there. Go ahead, Ryan.
The next action item, I would request that be delayed until the May twenty-seventh board meeting. We did have it in the board packet, we had a SNAFU, an issue with our online bidding software, and what ended up happening, and I'll have more detail for the May twenty-seventh meeting, but we're missing a bidder on here who was actually the low bidder. And there was some issue with their online digital certification of whether their bid was valid or not. Stefan's been working behind the scenes with the software company and is receiving a certification from them that the bid was valid, so we'll be providing revised bid summary and bid abstract for the county board to consider, and a recommendation to award to the verified low bidder that's not on this bid summary that's included in the packet, so I would request the board delay consideration of this item.
All right.
Move the delay.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to delay the County Road one thirty-nine bridge. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Action item number three, consideration of the final payment for state aid project zero zero seven six oh three oh one four and others, this is the two thousand and twenty-four bituminous overlays contract. OMG Midwest Incorporated Minnesota Paving Materials, original contract amount two million six hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars ninety-seven cents. Total final amount of the contract payment, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars seventy-four cents. Total final contract amount, two million nine hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. I would recommend payment of final pay request number seven to MPM.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the final payment for the bituminous overlays in twenty-four. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Action item number five is consideration of, I'm sorry, action item number four, consideration of MinDOT agreement number one zero five seven one two seven for state aid project zero zero seven five ninety-eight oh thirty-eight, this is for County Road one fifty-six bridge replacement. This grant agreement will give the county three hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-one cents of local bridge replacement program funds, including utilizing matching one hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and nineteen cents of county local funds to replace the bridge on County Road one fifty-six. What are the wishes of the board?
I'm moving.
Got a motion in a second. Got a motion in a second for County Road one fifty-six bridge replacement. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number five is consideration of the resolution in court, included in the MinDOT agreement number one zero five seven one two seven for the same SAP County Road one fifty-six bridge replacement project that's necessary for the MinDOT agreement. I would recommend approval of the resolution. Got a motion in a second.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the resolution for County Road one fifty-six. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you. Next action item number six, consideration of cooperative construction agreement between Bluer County and the city of St. Clair for the reconstruction, for state aid project zero zero seven six one five zero zero one one, I had too much coffee this morning, and state aid project zero zero seven six twenty-eight dash zero two five for the reconstruction of Cassa fifteen and Cassa twenty-eight in the city of St. Clair. This is pretty common agreement between the county and the city, as you've seen between other city agreements of similar nature. The last page is the preliminary schedule I that details the cost participation. The structure will effectively be that the county will carry the construction contract for the entirety of the work, which will include the city's utilities as well, and obviously the city will pay a prorated share of the project cost based on the project cost breakouts, and then the project engineering costs are prorated, again, based on the total project construction costs. We do anticipate utilizing the city's consultant engineer at Bolton and Mink to help with contract administration and construction oversight of the project. Right now, there are conversations, I think we're going to be having a meeting today or tomorrow, to, and subsequent conversations with city concurrence, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, but possibly breaking the project into two years based because of potential material delays and difficulties getting the project done. So we'll be working with the city on that, but I'm sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit. Preliminary schedule I, you'll see the county cost participation breakdown, including contingency and engineering costs, the total county cost participation, including ninety percent of the Cassa eligible items for the roadways, is two million thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty cents. The city cost participation, including, there are ten percent of the county state at highway eligible items for our roadways, thirteen percent of the storm sewer participating costs, all of the non-participating costs for the city utilities, as well as a little piece of road that they want to reconstruct in the city, is two million forty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty cents. With that, I would recommend approval of the cooperative construction agreement between the county and the city.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the agreement. Any discussion?
What date is supposed to start?
We are open up.
We'll have an update on that at the end, right? Or later, we'll go over that. I got some questions, too.
Yep.
So for the consideration of the construction agreement, any questions on this?
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you. Action item number seven is consideration of bids for two tandem truck purchases. This is our typical process, we did make a minor revision to our bidding process this year because of delays that we've seen with the dump body and plow equipment being put on the truck from, from the time that we received the chassis to that equipment being installed, that we did state that we would pay for the chassis so that the, because we used to wait to pay for it until we receive the whole package, and then the chassis provider would incur significant interest costs. So we say, once the chassis is provided, we'll pay for that so that they aren't incurring interest so that we can kind of minimize their risk. But we did not get a bid from MAC this year because of their, they've expressed concern about us going on low bid basis. We did tell them we would also consider availability, that if, you know, the other two are six to eight months out and they can provide a truck in a much shorter timeframe, we would consider that, but we are looking at this on the best use of the taxpayer dollars. With that being said, we received two bids, North Central International and Truck Center for Freightliner, with Truck Center being the low bid for the two trucks. Total price, as you can see, both units, chassis, and then the addition of the dump body, snow and sanding equipment. We do not have trade-in because once we get those, we'll actually sell the other trucks outright, we think we get better pricing, and just because of the delays we've seen, we don't trust the trade-in. Total price for two new units, six hundred and one thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars for two new Freightliner one fourteen SD trucks. So I'd recommend award to Truck Center for the Freightliners.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for two new trucks. My question is, if we pay for them right away, when does the warranty start? When we put it service?
That's a good question, I believe it's one.
I'd be concerned if we pay for it and the warranty starts and it sits for six months or eight months, or ten months, because that's what we want, that warranty's on the back end.
We're set to get two new trucks that are two years old.
Yep, and the warranty hasn't started yet, which if it did, we'd only have your warranty left on it, so just make sure that if we pay for, I'm okay with paying for them, but I don't want the warranty to start.
I don't want to be right.
Okay, got a motion in a second for the two new trucks, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, information update items, please interject with questions as we go. I did add Victory Drive, I apologize for missing that in my notes, but we did close the project for reconstruction yesterday. Lighting and signal removals are happening today and tomorrow, and then the contractor will begin pavement removals on Thursday. We are experiencing a lot of complaints, significant detour traffic on local roads directly adjacent to the project, and we're working with the city of Mankato attempting to mitigate those impacts. It's really difficult, you know, you've got a series of city streets that are directly adjacent to Victory Drive, and you close one thing and people just jump over to the next thing, and it's, you're kind of chasing, chasing your tail to a degree. So we're.
Don't you believe that's just like the first day issues, though?
There's some of that.
Because there's so many people that came off Hoffman and they wanted to turn on Victory, and all of a sudden they're, they're going, oops.
Yeah, yeah, there's some of that too, I agree, that is confusion.
They can turn on Marwood and then go down Plainview and.
My fear is if we let it propagate for too long, it becomes the new norm, so we're going to look at that today, we have a meeting after this with the city to kind of look at, because a lot of it could require potentially putting restrictions or other things on city streets, and we don't obviously have that authority.
Right.
So we are, we are meeting and looking at it, and we are feeling calls, and understand homeowners frustrations of traffic increase past their homes, their public streets.
That's directly in my area, so I do understand, but I haven't gotten no phone calls, which is surprising.
Yeah.
But I have walked that area and I have driven that area, and in fact, I took Marwood out to Victory this morning, you know, just to come down Glenwood. And so I can, I can understand some of the issues, but it's construction. And this is what you, you know, the people on the other side, and Hoffman went through it last year, so I get it.
Yep, it's the ugly side of construction, unfortunately, and, yep, that first week of detours, I mean, Commissioner Pap is, we've, we're still calloused from the detour going on our county roads from the closure of.
Twenty-one.
Minnesota Highway sixty, and so we're still dealing with that and the repercussions and the impacts, and the first couple weeks are rough of detours going in place, especially on heavy traffic going roads, for sure.
Yeah, I get it.
The County State at Highway twenty-nine Bridge Replacement Project, deck was poured last week, the bridge railing will be poured next week depending on the deck curing strength, and then after that kind of reaches its strength, the site grading will follow with the bridge railing completion, anticipating that'll probably be done sometime in late June. The County State at Highway nine Bridge Removal Project is just really slow going and frustrating us. Contractors still working on removing the concrete rubble from Pier one, this is the last of the concrete rubble to be demolished. The contractor still has to remove the piling from both abutments in Pier one, likely another two to three weeks for removal, cycling up and site restoration. And then we hope to have that finally done. That has delayed taking soil borings for the bridge design, so it's delaying our designing the bridge, as well as some of the design of the dam for bore engineering, too. Cassa five from Riverfront Drive to Summit Avenue, ninety percent plans, were just submitted by Bolton and Mink today, actually saw it in my inbox, so we'll be evaluating those, that's progressing very well. We still need the city of Mankato direction on their sanitary sewer replacement, so that's going to end up being a holdup, but the project design as a whole is in a good place. Again, we, when we get to a point where we catch our breath, we need to turn and look at what we want to do with that interchange in the future, whether we want to pursue roundabout or concrete pavement rehabilitation, and have probably an open house meeting to talk with the industry and nearby residents about roundabout interchange, so that's something I anticipate that we would do this summer yet, so it's just not, unfortunately, not been a high priority for us because it would be a project that would be put up probably in the end of our future CIP. Cassa fifteen and twenty-eight in St. Clair, I know we've got questions, we're opening bids May fourteenth for board consideration on May twenty-seventh. We will be discussing again delaying a portion of the project until two thousand and twenty-six with the cities. We'd obviously need their concurrence, again, their city engineer has been taking questions on industry concerns about material availability, primarily manholes and piping, maybe not being able to get that in a timely manner to feed the supply to the project, to be able to construct it in the time that they would like to. And so if that becomes the case and they have limitations there, it'll push the schedule back to where now you're talking about working into November with pipe work, which is never good. We want everything to be put back to a hard surface, obviously, this year, so we may put some time restraints and break it out into a segment that will have to be constructed in two thousand and twenty-six.
So you would not tear up the pavement on any of it, so you'd have.
If they, if they tear up the pavement, they would have to put it back.
Okay.
Yep, probably leaving off, you know, the top two inches, which is typical in a city project.
So moving into.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, but if they do two a year, they would pick one road or the other, or you just kind of let them?
Yeah, and a lot of it's dependent on the sanitary sewer, because you've got to start at the deep end and chase that uphill. So it's going to be highly dependent on the city utility replacement needs that will drive how the project schedule would happen. Unfortunately, you know, with where the post office is, that's impactful to the city regardless.
Right.
And the way that there's, the way that the town and the river divides the town, you know, makes it hard to get to the post office regardless.
That'd be challenging.
Yeah.
So is there, is there any benefits to put in an offer year, or do the construction costs go up that much more?
I think it'd be better to get it under contract.
Just get a contract on it and deal with it.
If nothing else, get that, get the road, get twenty-eight reconstructed to the post office, so at least the west half of town could get there.
Yeah. Okay, so you're working with the city and.
Yep.
Dealing with all that, so.
Yep, with their consultant engineer.
Hey, your little city projects are always challenged.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on that one? Start date, you were asking about Vance, but we got that, so.
Yep. All right. Ten from the west county line, just a note on that, Bencon Consolidated Communications have been relocating utilities in advance of our project, so if it looks like things are happening out there, they are, it's good to see utilities getting out of the way before we start. We anticipate bringing the bridge bonding agreement for, on May twenty-seventh for board consideration. I may have a few other board items on May twenty-seventh, I'm actually going to be gone on the June tenth board meeting, so if it's okay with the board, I may bring most of the items and just have Stefan bring a few cleanup items on June tenth. I'll be attending other meetings, unfortunately. Cassa forty slope repair project, the full project plans and supporting documents have been submitted to MinDOT for project approval. The project right away has been acquired and will advertise for construction in the coming months for work to take place later this fall, once we receive MinDOT approval. Maintenance activity updates, we did provide a map in there for the commissioner's information on where seal coating and crack sealing and patching, re-shouldering projects are at, as well as we will be molding all shoulders, where we are doing our mow out on the northern third of the county, and what treatments we'll be putting on those resurfacing efforts. Since there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. Aside from that, our maintenance crews have been out doing. Aside from that, our maintenance crews have been out doing their routine operations of, you know, blading roads and, and mowing, beginning to mowing and getting the equipment kind of changed over for our operations. I know I saw the crack milter was heading out, so the weather's turning nice and the guys are getting out and it's, it's nice to kind of just see them getting out into the field and getting after it, so. The last item I had in the board packet was Rapidan Dam update. I think I'll just try to kind of hit on the bigger items if that's okay with the board instead of going through every detail of every meeting we have because a lot of them tend to build on each other. Just, we have a, you know, we have a lot of standing weekly calls. April first, we had, we had our weekly call with TKDA. April third, we participated in a joint bridge and dam removal coordination meeting with TKDA and BAR. And, and really have been focusing a lot of energy and effort into the vision of where's the river going in relation to the bridge piers. There's just been a tremendous amount of coordination with respect to that. That's a huge effort and a huge undertaking. And, and how does it fit within the FEMA limits and how far back do we have to go on the river? And it's, there's still a lot of question marks that are there with respect to that. And, and how is the river going to continue to meander, move and scour? On April eighth, we participated in the project management team with TKDA. Recap the board work session earlier that day, as well as coordination with BAR. Began discussing the idea of lengthening the center span of the bridge. It does become more expensive, but there are other benefits that could reduce the costs of the piers that may be beneficial to the bridge. Which the, the, the thought is going to be coming that if we can lengthen the span of the bridge and get the, make sure that the piers are out of the river due to the high velocities, we can widen the river through there and decrease the velocities in the river thereby decreasing the scour potential. So we're looking at that right now. And they're, they're both BAR and TKDA are working together on that effort. Also discussed when the timing would be right for an open house meeting. I think we're, we've kind of all decided that we need to just wait on that until we have a more defined project design. Again, soil borings have been at a standstill until the demolition contractors out of the way. April sixteenth, we did receive an email from MINDOT Cultural Resource Unit confirming that no noise study is needed for our project. So that was a win. Good news. April twenty-second, we had another weekly check-in call. The bridge and dam site is a construction. So a constriction on the river, again, talking about just the velocities and the shear at, at that site is a, is a major problem. There's a tremendous economic benefit for the piers not to be in the river because any scour at those, they have to be heavily armored and, and huge foundations that are very expensive to construct. So again, we're, we're looking at these haunched girders to increase the center span length of the bridge. TKD again joined the call with BAR on April twenty-fourth. So there, there's been a lot of communication between the two, again, talking just through the river shear velocities. BAR has this really impressive two-dimensional river modeling and, and they kind of create a heat map of scour and velocities in the river. It's incredibly impressive and then they can have their, their modeling and this map pulls up and it's, it's kind of looks like you can see where the hot spots are for scour. It's really cool. And, and the engineer from BAR that's doing it is, I think he's a Greek and really incredibly smart guy, incredibly impressive. And I mean, I can't, I, I'm just really happy with the team that we have on board between TKDA and BAR Engineering. So a lot of kudos to those guys and Tom McDonald overseeing it with his experience, just phenomenal work that they're doing. April twenty-ninth, we had another weekly check-in meeting with TKDA, so this is really bridge, bridge focused. They're still working with their subconsultant, O N E, Steve Olson, who's got a tremendous wealth of bridge design experience as well. So they brought him in as a kind of a peer review and subconsultant to work with Matt on kind of the high level design. And they're working on those length alternatives. When we look at the dam, jump into that. On April seventh, we had a check-in meeting with FEMA. They're getting close to finalizing the quantities. There's still some discretion, discrepancy on the powerhouse items of whether or not they're going to cover those. I think in the latest email now that we've seen, it appears that they may be covered. It's, it's, it's still unclear to me. I don't know. Has it, has it become clear to you, Bob? She said no, and then we got a, a damage inspection that looked like they would be, so we're, we're going through the motions, still trying to see if they'll cover them. There, we did, uh, uh, just finally, they were saying that the, the damaged quantities were on the way. Fast forward, we just got them this week, so that's the good news. So now I did forward them onto BAR for them to look at them. April tenth, let's see if there's anything else. Just really kind of leading up to all of that. Bi-weekly meeting with BAR on April tenth. Again, soil borings have been delayed. Talking about the river, how heavily armored it's going to have to be based on the velocities they were seeing. They were talking about we'd have to have boulders the size of cars to armor it if they can't widen it to reduce velocities. It's pretty hard to find boulders the size of cars and get them placed in.
Right.
Bolden Mink provided their architectural historian recommendation for shipple and BAR review. We also reviewed it for final iteration. Temporary stabilization determination memo was issued on April sixteenth from, from FEMA. And with that, the background, I think the board's fully aware of this, but just as a recap, it was provided. BAR's September twentieth, twenty twenty-four technical memorandum, provided three feasibility alternatives that were shared with the board. And if you remember, one alternative was to cut the escarpment back. The other alternative was to fill it in. And the third alternative was to put the rock shoots down to try to deflect the flows at the base to protect it from further scour. We sent that memorandum to BAR, I'm sorry, we sent that memorandum to FEMA and requested public assistance funding for the emergency fill slope to, to, to try to fill in in the amount of eight million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand. And the logic that we had at the time was that that was incorporated into the future work and it would eliminate future rework. On September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, FEMA sent correspondence explaining that a stabilization may only be eligible if the slope instability poses an immediate threat to life, public health and safety or improve public, private property. And that FEMA only provides that P A funding for the least costly option necessary to alleviate the immediate threat, which obviously that was not the least costly option in the report. On October twenty-fourth, the county provided a formal request for verification of immediate threat from FEMA funding eligibility. This was all the documentation that I'll be referring to is also provided in the back as an attachment to this memorandum. FEMA has denied the county request for funds to stabilize the west escarpment, which is included as attachment number one. We have sixty days from the issuance of this memorandum to challenge this determination, which is detailed in attachment number two. This appeal would be due on June sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Since we have submitted this request for determination, it has subsequently been determined that the current channel opening width is needed to pass future flood events and constricting this opening could create adverse effects during a future flood event. So we did ask to fill that slope in, but I think one thing that we've learned since then with more information and river channel hydraulics is that if we did that in the interim condition with the dam still in, in the event of another flood event, it would wash out.
Take it out again.
Challenging the FEMA findings will likely require significant coordination between county engineer, county administrator, county attorney and BAR engineering. The county would need to clearly demonstrate that the slope instability poses an immediate threat to life, public health and safety. The county previously attempted to show that the vertical drop-off along the western bank creates a hazard for the public. And the county has already installed a chain link fence to protect the public from falling into the river. We acknowledge that individuals have been walking around the fence onto private property. FEMA did not support this claim, but replied that they have already support the cost of placing the fence. So again, they're looking at the least costly option. And we're only looking at, again, emergency funds. It's not to say that FEMA won't cover the cost and we did see the quantities for replacing the fill material in the escarpment in the permanent scope, but this is for the emergency cost to, to do something in the interim. Boils down to it in my conversation with BAR, I don't know that we are confident that challenging FEMA determination will result in a different determination. FEMA writes that the applicant has not substantiated any threats to life, public health and safety or improvement private property which resulted from the declared incident. Therefore, the applicant's request for emergency slope stabilization funding is denied. That was on page five. The appeal may have the possibility of becoming technical and legal challenge even with the county performing a detailed analysis and performing plans. It may not change FEMA's analysis. I did speak with Homeland Security Emergency Management. They did recommend that we challenge it regardless because he said you, you have different eyes to take a look at this. It, it'll go to Washington DC for another review and it doesn't really cost us anything to have them review it. However, there is cost to us in having BAR and others help us with technical assistance and obviously taking staff energy to work on this appeal. So with that, I would request board discussion and direction on where we would like to go from here with this request. And again, this is for requesting emergency funds for the slope, which is now almost, well, eleven months, almost eleven months removed from the incident. Knowing that it would be covered in a future condition, but we were making the argument that under a future flood in the interim, it would wash out, create more damage.
So you're, in your opinion, you think that if we did fill it and we got another major flood, it would wash out?
It would wash out some of it.
Well, then why would we challenge it? Their decision, I mean.
I, I think regardless, in, in a, in a, if we have another flood of that level and that magnitude, it's, it's gonna wash out more of the land that's there, of the county park and the private property to the north. It's gonna continue to undercut and scour. If we place the fill in and armor it, it's gonna wash out some of that. I think the fill and the armoring would help deter, but it's gonna, it, it could also create other adverse impacts that we don't think of maybe downstream with other meandering as it, as it, because it's gonna create a constriction there that could create other impacts on the other side of the stream. We don't, we don't know without having more detailed design or analysis.
I'm not an engineer, but would it be easier to take the dam out?
Yes. I'd, I'd love to, trust me.
This is just very problematic for me. I mean, we, we are working against ourselves here.
I know.
We're doing eight million dollars of dirt into a hole and then it could wash out. I mean, I understand it could protect some more property, but that's a, that costs, if we could take the dam out for eight million, we'd have a different path for the water. So I'm, I'm very, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree that it might not hurt to run it up the chain and have somebody else look at it, but we already know that this is a huge impact on our staff and resources to pay people to keep taking this stuff and challenge it. And chances of getting it, well, getting it eight million dollars of the dirt filled in that hole before the next big rain, who knows? Could happen, might not happen.
Could be this weekend.
Could be, you know, so I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about spending the extra resources to run it up the chain. As much as I wouldn't fight it, but it just, to me, I think we should spend more time getting the dam out of there.
I, yeah, I, I'm incredibly frustrated with just the, the red tape in the way. And, and I think we know that if we, if we'd have gone the route of local resources years ago and just gotten it out of there, it would have been much easier and much less red tape to go through. Now if we choose to use these federal funds to remove the dam, there is a tremendous amount of red tape we have to go through.
And I think we've had this conversation, but if we decided to use local money, our money to remove that dam, we still have huge challenges. That's still not gonna happen.
We still have to go through the.
In the next three months.
No, we still have to go through the process is my understanding.
And we're, with that process, we've been working on for three years already, right? Give or take? Other thoughts from the board? I guess I'm a little concerned about running it up the chain.
And I was, you know, just because I went out to the ponderose, went over the Blueworth River and the river is up. Are we seeing erosion and scouring now because of the weird that, that the dam is causing?
Up and down additional?
Additional.
Well, I mean, we've seen massive changes in the river, obviously, because of the sediment that's been deposited downstream of the dam. And so we're seeing direct, we're seeing direct impacts of scour as, as we've seen a little bit of additional meander now introduced as the river, because of that blockage in the river. Where now the river's running around to the west and bouncing back off the east. So we're seeing some, some additional.
On both sides.
On both sides there. I haven't been further downstream or seen other, not say it's not happening, but again, we've seen so much degradation and degradation, it's hard to say.
So where are you at trying to run this up and challenge their decision? Are you?
And I think I, you know, in my statement, I, I don't think we're gonna see a change from FEMA based on the arguments that are there and, and we did ask for the most expensive option. Again, we requested this back in September and here we are in, in May with more information.
It could take a year to tell us no again.
Right.
And we just spend another year of resources and your staff?
We're here to do the, the job that we're given. And if the board desires, we, we can certainly continue to, to work on this. I don't know that I think, but we certainly can continue to make an effort to go through it. It's just, there, there will be costs associated with it.
I'm not interested, so unless there's other.
Nope.
Me neither. This makes me tired, thinking about doing.
I, I, it's, uh, it's certainly, it's a lot of money and I just, I wanna be realistic with you. And I don't know that I think there's a high likelihood of success, given the fact that we're talking emergency management and the farther out we go, it seems to lessen the, the impotence or the, yeah, the, the, the emergency nature of it.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, pieces of the FEMA letter that Brian didn't include talked about the immediate threat. And they commented on the fact that the county has installed fencing and so someone would have to kind of physically go around the impediment that we put in place to keep people out of there. So part of their argument is you've already addressed the immediate threat with the fencing. And so, you know, to me, as I've looked at it, I see low probability that someone in Washington now is going to say, oh no, there's still an immediate threat to allow this request to be funded under this emergency assistance element. Again, FEMA's saying we'll consider it as part of kind of the public assistance, but it's just that emergency assistance element that they're saying, no, this doesn't qualify.
Not saying we're not gonna get paid for.
Right.
Filling that slope in. We're not gonna get paid for it right now as an emergency. It's gonna be the, the, the end of the project.
And to me, it makes more sense to fill it in after the.
In light of the news, the understanding now of the need for that hydraulic opening. But again, unfortunately, it leaves the county land and the private property exposed and at risk and unstable still.
Yeah, and we have plenty of that along all the rivers in Blueworth County. We have plenty of, right off of ninety, there's that little, I think it's actually, even some of it's our county park, or not county park, but a county portion of land and there's a huge drop-off there. It's not, it's not even fenced. I mean, we have those areas all over the county. So I guess I just think we have a real hard time.
I agree.
We've, we've put the fence up. We've got extra law enforcement out there. And we're doing what we can to keep the site secure and that's our goal here. But to fill it in and on an emergency basis, I just don't know if that's in the best interest of taxpayers' money and resources. We gotta, we gotta save our money to pay electric bill apparently.
I think it's a sign.
So with that, other thoughts or?
They're back on stuff.
Is that enough direction?
Yes.
Anybody else have any other feelings, different directions?
I agree with you a hundred percent.
I appreciate it.
Fastest, fastest way we can get this through and by sending up another request to Washington DC is gonna. DC is going to slow it down another year.
I appreciate the, the conversation and the direction. Thank you. April 21st FEMA check-in meeting, discuss the determination memo, all the DDDs are just signed except for the dam. Addition, the power generation equipment is being separated. We did, again, just receive that. We did end up providing them with our insurance information for the pavilion and the shed so that they could have that per their request. NEPA document discussion. April 24th report, I did submit the report for the Phase 1 Architectural History Reconnaissance Survey, and the Phase 2 Evaluation for the Rapid Anam Dam was submitted to the FERC. The report did conclude that the dam is recommended as not eligible for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places due to a loss of integrity since its period of significance. Bolton Mank recommends no additional architectural history review for the project as currently proposed. So that's been submitted to the FERC, which will then be routed to the shipboat. So they have to obviously accept that determination, but Bolton Mank is an independent architectural historian with the qualifications that they would seek. So again, we did that preemptively, hoping to not have to wait for it on the back end because it did take six months upfront, so hoping that the timing worked out. Last but not least, as of the date that this was written, we participated in a week-by-week call with Barr. Interagency was called, was held on April 14th regarding FERC license surrender. Barr has been securing pricing for large quantities of, large rocks for river channel stabilization, so they're working very diligently behind the scenes on this as well. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. It is a lot.
So how do, and again, this is getting into the weeds a little bit, but how do you secure pricing for large quantities of rock for projects we may not do for...
Well, I think they call quarries and kind of try to get an understanding of what the pipeline is in the future and what the pricing is now and impacts to the next five years.
It's a long process, and we know how fast prices change. I just don't know how, interesting.
Yep, and there's a lot of variability, and that's why we use those, those magical contingency numbers that I know are kind of just out in the ether at times, but some of it is a little bit at times, unfortunately, a swag.
Any other questions for Ryan, comments? Good discussion, Ryan. Thank you for all your information.
Yeah. All right, have a good day.
You too.
Thank you. All right, this time we'll move on to item number six, the county attorney update. Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. You know, you've got a pretty, pretty full day, and Commissioner Pat needs to get out of here anyway. Just a couple of things I'd like to point out to your attention. We have, the time filing for tax appeals has closed, so that's down quite a bit from last year, only 23, but those, even though there's only 23 this year, that can be very time-consuming for, for staff on that, but that's looking good in that respect. We've been working quite a bit with the school districts because the state has been pretty tough on wanting to make sure that kids are in school and whatnot, and still coming out of, out of COVID, we're still facing challenges and whatnot, been working with Nickle County as well on that. And then the only other thing I was going to say is that we still continue to see some increase in violent crimes in the area and the cases that we're dealing with and whatnot. So other than that, if you don't have any questions, concerns, or comments, or if you do, please let me know. Other than that, I'll sit down.
Any questions for Pat?
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for that report. All right, we'll be down to item number seven, some administration.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for April 22nd.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next, are the bills for the two weeks indicated?
To approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pay the bills. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab number nine in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Have one action item for the board's consideration today, and that's the renewal of our fully-insured health insurance plan with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota. This plan year covers July 1st, 2025, through June 30th of 2026. Recommending approval of that contract.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second for the new health insurance, renewal of the health insurance plan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Under informational items, we have filled a couple of maintenance technician ones in our Public Works Department. We also have initiated recruitment to refill a probation officer one in our Community Corrections Department. Then we had a change of a job title in the library from a library clerk on call to a part-time library technician, and we've, as a result of that, initiated recruitment for a library clerk on call. And we did fill a clerical specialist two position in our Human Services Department, and had a resignation of a social worker in our Child Protection Assessment area in Human Services, as well as a resignation of a supportive housing social worker, again, in Human Services. Be happy to answer any questions on those items, if the board has any.
Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on.
All right. Tab 10 in your packet then has a memo regarding an on-sale liquor license for Morgan Creek Vineyard. They have now submitted the required paperwork to renew their on-sale liquor license. This will allow the vineyard to sell beer in accordance with our Farm Winery Ordinance. Has been reviewed by the county attorney and sheriff, and so we're recommending approval today.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second for the liquor license. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab 11 in your packet then has a memo regarding All Seasons Arena change orders and quotations consideration. You'll see that we're requesting two action points today. We did, through ASA, do a request for quotations on revision to the wall between the main entrance and the north rink. As they were working on the construction plans, they noticed that the plans didn't really specify clearly how to connect the wall to the roof, and so it was determined by the contractor that some additional information would be needed. They also recognized that the original design was a concrete wall going all the way to the roof. They're suggesting that might be cheaper, and as you'll see, it did turn out that way that by doing metal stud walls for part of it would be cheaper. And so did a request for proposals for the new wall, and you'll see that after a couple of different iterations, it came in at, make sure I get the right amount here, $25,350. So that would be the first motion that we would request support for.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the $25,350. Any discussion?
So how much are we going to save?
Well, that'll be part of this change order. So as you'll see, that there is a deduction of $18,362 as a result of the deduction of the CMU wall. So the change order has an $18,362 reduction, so it actually, maybe my correction would be, the net increase is $6,987. So there is a reduction in the original cost, but it is a little bit higher to go this route because of having to connect now to the roof.
So we're doing it to save money, but it's costing us more.
Well, yeah, I maybe didn't explain that as well as I could have in terms of there is a small increase or an increase of this $6,987.
Well, it depends on how they wrote the CMU wall, though. If the CMU wall wasn't written to do what it's supposed to do, that cost would have been higher. The CMU is what we're deducting, correct?
Right.
So, they probably, to do the CMU wall the way you're supposed to would cost more, but this is the only number they can deduct because that's the number that's in the bid. All right.
In order to get the wall right, yes, we had an increase of 6,900, but it would have been more if we had just gone to an all steel wall and stuff. So they explored a lot of different options, and the net effect was this.
This was the best one.
Right.
It's things you encounter with a...
Old building.
Old building.
I get it. It just seems like every two weeks to a month, we're getting a change order, and that's, that's getting...
And this is the challenge of, the city of Mankato is in charge of All Seasons Arena, and so they're doing all of this behind-the-scenes work, so they're presenting information to All Seasons Arena, they're providing the information in this memo. We hear about it and have to relay it to you based on the joint powers agreement requirements that anything over $10,000 has to come back to the partner, $25,000 maybe is the figure now. And so it does get a little complicated and confusing at times.
Yeah, we, we don't deal with this on all of our other projects. Admin deals with all of this, while we do our own projects. You guys have just as many change orders and just as much complication. We're building the government center over there, the highway building right now, is this is all going on every day.
I signed about four or five change orders on the Public Works Building yesterday.
This is common practice. We're just seeing it. It's not common practice for us to see this. Okay, so at this time, we got a motion on the table for additional steel studying for $25,350 is what's been moved and seconded, so that's what we'll be voting on. And if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
So then the change order is the deduction of the $18,362.50 for the removal of that CMU wall.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to remove the CMU wall. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item number 12 in your packet then is the first quarter donations for 2025. You'll see in monetary donations, again, a number of donations to our library system, as well as towards the bottom of the first page, donations towards a veterans van. And then at the top of the second page is a donation to the Adult Mental Health Initiative. So for a total monetary gifts of $8,293.08. And we did have in-kind donations for the library totaling $2,890.44, and then also some volunteer time at the library totaling, let's see, $5,098.85. And so we're requesting board acceptance of these donations as we do on a quarterly basis.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the donations. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, according to my agenda, that brings me to our committee reports. Is there anything else, Bob?
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
All right. At this time, we'll do our committee reports. Mark, I'm going to have you start today.
April 22nd, we had our joint meeting with Nickle County, and also on that, we had the Government or Employees Social, and 23rd with the Justice Center Social, and then, let's see, I had a virtual ASA All Seasons Arena on the 25th, and that was part of what we're talking about. And then we had the Public Works, they had open house on the 25th, that was on 25th, too. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Kevin?
Like Commissioner Peoples said, the Nickle County Joint Board Meeting, Government Center Employee Appreciation, the Public Works Safety Meeting I also attended. Also on the 25th was our Lassure One Watership One Plan Policy Committee Meeting. The 28th was a NACO Ag Policy Update. Yesterday on the May 5th, we had the U of M Extension Committee, and then this morning, the JD 83 meeting prior to this board meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Patty?
Okay, well, as they were all mentioned already, the Nickle County, the Employee April County, what is it?
County Government Month.
County Government Month Appreciation with all the staff. And the only meeting I had different was on April 28th, my NACO Committee Meeting. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vance?
All right. Attended about the same stuff, the Blue River, Nickle County Joint Meeting, the Government Center Employee Social, the Justice Center Employee Social on the 23rd, Public Works Noon Luncheon Safety Meeting on the 25th. Last week, I did not have a meeting last week, and yesterday I had two meetings. I had the Executive Board Meeting for MRCI on Zoom, and then the Transportation Alliance Board of Directors Meeting on Zoom. That was mine.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Yes, we spent a lot of time together the last couple of weeks because every single meeting that was mentioned, we were at one point with each other. So the only thing I knew that I had to add, other than all of them that had been mentioned, is I had a couple ditch meetings with some people out in the field, and then some gravel road issues that I had to take a look at, and a couple of things going on, on the lakes. Everybody's starting to get out and about, get the lakes looking nice, so.
Very nice.
That's about all else I had over and above that. So that brings us to the end of our meeting. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, I would ask for a motion to recess.
Move to recess.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We are recessed.